I'm going to call the Dover School Committee to order March 7th, 6:30 at the Chicaring Elementary School. Do I have any community comments? Hearing none? We're going to move on to the proposed budget and presentation for fiscal year '20. I can drive if you want to start. You might want to get the lights.
Do you want us to move? You can stare at you.
Can you see?
Come over here. I can go sit on the bench. Go sit on the bench.
It's not very bright, is it?
Yeah.
I'm ready.
Does that work for you over there? Okay.
So, so I'd like to just kick this off and remind people, certainly at home, but also the school committee members, and I know you know this, that when we go about building a budget for the schools, we, we take a lot of time to make sure that anything we're asking for is consistent with our mission and our goals for the district. Nothing's more frustrating, I think, to the public than to, than to think that we're just guessing about things that we're interested in, but it doesn't really relate to any kind of goal. So, obviously, our mission, the Dover Sherburne School, sharing the mission to inspire, challenge, and support all students as they discover and pursue their full potential, which is consistent with our, on our strategic plan, which I believe is the next slide. Yes, the strategic plan overview. There'll be a test on this to see if you were really reading it, but the truth is, you can't really see it. If anyone can access this, you know that, online. But it does have our mission, it does have our core values, which are obviously also very important to us, the commitment to community, equity and excellence, respect and dignity, and climate of care. And then beneath that, you have our five areas of focus in our strategic plan, innovative teaching and learning, health and well-being of students and staff, partnership with families and communities, safe and innovative facilities, and resource efficiency. Thank you. So, I think you'll, you'll, you know this, but others at home who are following this presentation will recognize that the things that we've asked for are very much consistent with the goals of the strategic plan.
Great, thank you. So, as part of the presentation, we would like to walk you through sort of the key drivers of the budget and what went into being what we think is a very responsible budget for the taxpayers at Dover. There was really four things that we kept in, in mind when the budget was created. Obviously, the mission and strategic plan objectives that Dr. Kio just reinforced with us, so, thank you. Compliance with any state mandates, obviously, that's something that we are required to keep an eye on. Special education is one of those examples. We also want to adhere to any school district policies. Class size is another one of those examples. And then, as always, we need to keep an eye on our facilities and assets that the taxpayers are providing for us and making sure that they're safe and up to date. So, as we approach the budget, we want to keep a sharp appreciation for the town finances, adhere to the Warren Committee's guidelines to provide level services. And the budget really did not take into account a couple of areas, one of which is healthcare, and that's because it's included in the overall town healthcare costs. And then, two other areas, one is our Chapter 70 revenues, approximately about $800,000 in the circuit breaker reimbursements, which are expected to be about $1 million to offset the budget for fiscal year '20. And then, as a point of note and reminder, this year, we are not asking for any capital items for fiscal year '20.
Do you want questions now or at the end?
I'd ask at the end.
Okay.
Okay. So, to set the table on the budget, from '19 to '20, there's really two components that make up the overall budget. There is the budget for the Chicaring school system, and then the out-of-district component, which is comprised of tuition and transportation costs. You'll notice that there was a very small increase in budget change for Chicaring at about 0.4%, and then the out-of-district increase of about 4.6-7%, but that was primarily made up of the significant increase in transportation. And that gives our overall increase from fiscal year '19 to '20 at about 1.7%. So, I'm going to focus on the key drivers for Chicaring, and then I'll talk about the drivers for the out-of-district. I think it's important to look at the two separately. We estimate to have about 25 sections for fiscal year '20 with a range of 485 to 496 students. As always, we have contractual obligations to our educators, so that's stated in the next bullet point, which is a big part of the budget, obviously, is paying for staff. We also have taken into effect some salary changes that offset the fiscal year budget '19 to '20 with a decrease of about $184,000. And then, we have a few other items which we'll go into further detail. One is around the district SED reorganization, which has resulted in a budget reduction. Change in the SED programming, and all of this has to do with what's relevant for next year, making sure we're still providing the appropriate services, but things change from year to year, and that is reflected in the budget. And then, we also had a net reduction in educational assistance, which resulted in another decrease of about $66,000. Four other drivers, we have an increase in cost in our summer services. We had a one-time textbook cost in 2019 budget, FY '19, that results in a decrease this year. Our custodial overtime resulted in a reduction as well as we have an increase in technology replacement costs. So, Dr. Kio, I would like you to touch a little base, a little bit on the reorganization around the SED program.
Sure. So, yeah, so the, with regard to the in-district special education, we have, we have conducted the reorganization of our SED administrative structure. We talked about that before, moving to a district, district-wide Director of Student Services, who oversees special education guidance and health, and a special ed coordinator shared between Dover and Sherburne at the elementary level. So, that's a key change for us. We're moving from a Director of Special Education K-12 to really a two-tiered student services model. We're also increasing support for social-emotional learning, including a part-time adjustment counselor. This is one of the things that came out of the special education review. They made what we thought was a really good point, which is that, for whatever reason, social-emotional needs of our children seem to be on the rise, and we're concerned about that. And we know that we need more adjustment counseling, but not just for special needs children, for all of our children. So, this will allow our guidance counselor to continue to provide the support that she has been for our whole population, and that, and will be coupled with an adjustment counselor who will provide additional support for those who need more significant support. And we're, we're looking at a reduction in the staffing for the Strategic Learning Center, and, or these are drivers, in alignment of staffing with current student needs.
Thank you. So, just to set where we are, the next piece we're talking about are out-of-district budget drivers for 2000, fiscal year 2020. Again, tuition, we saw a slight increase, but the primary driver in the increase for out-of-district is around transportation. Oops. Wrong button. There we go. So, the, the drivers around that, just to remind everybody what the, this slide is new, Dawn, I didn't have this in my previous one. We have the out-of-district.
I don't mind going through it.
Back to it. Mandates and funding. So, to remind everybody, special education is a federally mandated program where we need to provide services with students with disabilities from ages three to 22. We need to provide, meet the legal standards of free and appropriate public education in the least restrictive environment. We are budgeting 30 students to be placed out of district for fiscal year '20, for those that can't have appropriate level of services required for their education. And then, as a reminder, we have the circuit breaker reimbursement for the state to support the out-of-district tuition costs, and we are participating in that to be about $1 million.
And I would just add that that 30 students is pre-K to 12, not just...
Pre-K to 22.
Sorry, pre-K to 22. Yes, pre-K to 22, not just the Chicaring age group.
So, we have a slight increase in tuition, about $21,000, based on our estimated placements. The drivers that happened there is we actually had four placements that graduated or aged out with a reduction of 244,000 from fiscal year '19 to '20. We had two placements that stayed in district that also resulted in a decrease. We have a net increase of changes, so folks that are already placing, that has an increase of about 110,000. Then, we have four new placements to, I guess, balance off of the four placements that graduated out, that has an increase of 200,000. So, we have an expectation of a 3% increase of about $70,000 for fiscal year '20. I did mention the transportation costs via our Accept Collaborative with an increase of about $125,000. And then, we have the circuit breaker one more time. And that is the overview of our budget. I'm going to open up to questions.
I had a Capitol question, and this might be a Dawn thing, and maybe I just, we talked about it and I forgot about it. What happened with the paving and the fire roads?
Right, so the paving, actually, we did go to Capitol, and the highway department's taking that under their, their programming. Yeah, it really fits more. That was the one last piece of paving that was in your report that hadn't been pulled out, and they were in total agreement that it would just be the highway department's responsibility.
So, since we have nothing this year, and we have some years coming up with the roof, and we don't want to pull anything...
We really looked to try to pull something in, but the floors are just not...
Ready?
Yeah. And so, I told Capitol Committee that, that we did look to see what we could pull in, but it didn't really make sense, the floors are still in really good shape, to prematurely do them, just to make sure you had...
And remember, the onsite insight reports, really recommendations, they kind of expect we'll look at them.
Since we have nothing, and then we're going to have some big hits coming up.
So, it's that second year, we've had nothing?
Right.
From memory, isn't it the, the roof and the windows, those are too big?
Yeah.
But that's, I think, one's seven years out, and one's about another...
Right. And we're getting ready to have some experience with just the whole roofing replacement with the region, which will then help us, on the educational standpoint, for both Chicaring and then Pine Hill. Everyone's sort of coming up within the same eight-to-10-year period. So, we will, looking at funding, what way do we go about doing this? We're going to have a trial run with the region that will very, be very helpful for Chicaring.
That would be great, okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we were...
Yeah.
Staggering.
Exactly.
I just have a couple of questions and sort of comments on the, I just have to say, on the enrollment. Great to see us nudging closer to 500 after all the angst and recent years about bottoming of the numbers. That's just tremendous. To Dawn or Andrew, the 30 pre-K to 22 number, is that, that seems slightly less than it's been in the last...
It was 32. We budgeted 32 in fiscal year '19. I was looking at some old reports today, and back a couple of years ago, we had as high as 38.
That's right.
So, we are seeing a trend downward in that arena.
At a time when enrollment is right.
Right. So, I do think that the investments that Chicaring has made over the last 10 years has definitely had an impact on children being placed out at the elementary level, and then that would continue on, actually, you know, theoretically, as they progress up to 12. So, I think there's adding a pre-K of that 38, a big chunk of those were the pre-K that we had sent over to Pine Hill, so...
And that's, that's important to note, because once a student leaves the system, it can, it can be for a long time. And we obviously would prefer that our students stay. And so, for them to leave at pre-K level or around that age level, that's, that's going to be a challenge for the system for a long time. I mean, the kids are entitled to the, to the services, and if we can't provide them, then so be it. But that's one of the things that the, that came out of the review, and it's obviously something that's really on our mind, because we think it's good for the kids to stay on both sides, the kid with the special needs and the kids who do not have the special needs, and we also think it's fiscally prudent to try and keep our kids in-house.
I think we're probably seeing an average increase, though, per student, but I think that's because the students that we can't keep in district actually are usually the more costly students to place out. So, although we're seeing the numbers go down, I don't think we're necessarily seeing the overall cost go down because of the intensive, intensity level of the, the students who are being placed out.
And that's also a factor with the, the transportation, the rise in transportation costs. It is true that Accept's transportation costs have gone up with the withdrawal of Framingham, but we also have students with more complex issues riding, and so that increases it, and we have more students than we have in the past riding. So, it's kind of a, it's not just one isolated reason, it's actually a couple of different reasons.
For my small brain, before I assume something incorrect, an adjustment counselor, what exactly, obviously, they help with adjustments, but I'd, I'd love to understand a little bit more.
So, I think we traditionally think of, well, how can I say this? Chicaring and Pine Hill School both have guidance counselors. Guidance counselors were what we traditionally saw in elementary schools, a guidance counselor. You didn't typically have adjustment counselors in elementary schools, because you weren't seeing the same kinds of issues that we're seeing today. So, we are, in fact, seeing, not only in Dover and Sherburne, but in schools across the state, kids having much more complex issues, breakdowns, just kind of big disruptions that are all, that all fall into this social-emotional, socially-emotionally challenged kids. And they need a little bit more intensive service than your typical guidance counselor is trained to do. So, the adjustment counselors are usually a licensed social worker. It's more of a therapeutic kind of counseling, as opposed to kind of settling playground disputes.
Right.
So, it's, it's a more intensive kind of counseling, and it's, it's a sad statement of where we are, but this is actually happening across the country. And then, I'm not, I'm not prepared to explain why, because I don't, I think many of us are only speculating on the possible reasons, but it is...
And we have adjustment counselors in the region, though, right?
We do have adjustment counselors in the middle school and the high school, and we're increasing them. Because the one thing that's really important to note in this is that this is something that applies to our general ed and special ed students. It's not just special ed students who need the adjustment counselors.
Oh, question.
Yeah, so, so what happens frequently is that the special, special education students might need our, our existing guidance, adjustment counselors, or guidance counselors, or psychologists the most. But then, when the, the larger population of general education students need access to those people, they, they're not available. So, we want to make sure that all of our, we're really looking out for all of our kids, which is, again, consistent with what we've talked about in the strategic plan, all of our students. And so, that's why you're seeing an increase in our ask at the region, at Pine Hill School, and here.
With, this is going to sound too generalized to be taken seriously, but with the wave of increase in, in data, in students of all ages experiencing anxiety, and, as you said, moments of crisis, moments of emotional crisis, it seems very likely that the current first graders and kindergarteners at Chicaring, over the next 20 years, when they finish their career out of DS, are probably going to have more difficult moments of this regard than certainly the people exiting the DS high school system as, as seniors this year. And I, please, Beth and Dawn and Andrew, over the years, over the time, please think as broadly and as actively and as decisively as you can as to how to provide the support structure for these kids. Being in DS is a very, it's like being in a very deep swimming pool for the kids, that there aren't, that a lot is asked of them. We just want to make sure there are as many lifeguards there as possible. And, and, and that means talking to bodies like this about money. And please, 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 don't ever think that you can't act as boldly and as strongly in this regard as possible. That would be my thought, because I think, I think the, at the moment, as you said, the professionals are, are, they're, they're the best people to try and work out why this is happening, but even they're struggling to do it. And when we're in a situation where we don't know why something's happening, but it certainly is happening, it calls for extra help, I think.
Well put. And, and I would say that, you know, to the credit of the administration and staff at Chicaring and all of our schools, quite honestly, they've really worked hard to try and make things work. But the, the kinds of programming that we're trying to put in place for social-emotional learning challenges are really about helping these kids to find solid solutions for addressing their issues rather than just outbursts. And so, I, I think we're on the right track, and I appreciate that, and I suspect that we'll have more asks in the future. I don't, I, I definitely do think that's coming. And the same for the region and the high school.
And there is a, just district-wide, the investment is quite large for fiscal year '20 in that we're adding a full adjustment counselor and a full psychologist at the region, doubling the staff that they have now, and adding another district-wide BCBA to the district. So, a lot of, of, of resources, I think, are being added to sort of, you know, to sort of attack this problem that we see across the, you know, nation.
And by, by the way, what, can I add one more thing about the social-emotional learning, because this is really important? This isn't just a special education problem.
No, no, yeah, absolutely.
Right, I mean, but I think sometimes people get confused about that. It's, it's really, it's all of us within the school community have to collectively address this. Gen ed staff need more training. Our special education staff need more training, our administrative staff, we all need more training in how, what are the, the best approaches, which is in large part why the BCBA is so important. This is a board-certified behavior analyst who can actually help us to kind of strategize how to work best with the children with these needs, so...
No, my, my, my thought was, and Dawn, your point about the level of investment, absolutely, total respect to that. My, my thinking about how this moves forward in the future, it's almost, and it's not just DS, and it's certainly not just special education children, you look across the, this country and across the world, the anxiety of young people is, is ramping up. I almost think of it, as, as we thought of the FLESS program. We've known that kids will be marching through the years with Spanish language that's going to be, need to be budgeted for. And I almost think, fear that we might have to start thinking of years of children who have, who have, who are going to have more need for support than we did when we were at school or parents did when they were at school, just the data's saying that. Anyway, sorry.
Well, you, you may be right, but as a reminder, I mean, when, when we did the special education review, they did give us good data points to show the numbers of kids who had to be outplaced for, say, social-emotional issues, and the bubble really was in the middle school and upper high school. So, but we are thinking of it that way, the same way you are, which is, let's have those services in place all the way through, and, and be more consistent in our messaging so that the, the kids don't feel different, they feel like they're getting the same message when they move to the middle school and when they move to the high school. That's a big part of that reorg and what we're trying to do with that. So, I think we're on the right track, but it, but it is, it is true that it, it could be costly, and there may be more asks in the future, for sure. And we have felt very supported, really, across both towns. We've had really good support from Warren and advisory and, and the school committees.
Am I correct that this person will have the same kind of skill set as they get the Bridge Program at the region, where if there's a school avoidance issue or someone is out of school for a period of time, that they would help with that type of adjustment as well?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, because I...
That, that would be kind of a classic...
Part of that skill set.
Yeah, type of a situation that the adjustment counselor would help with.
I can see that being very helpful.
Yeah, yeah. Another important piece of this is the parent training, which is in our strategic plan as well. It's really important for parents to have strategies. And, and the anxiety that you mentioned is such a huge issue. I don't know if you saw the article, but they were mentioning how in many of the more affluent nations of the world, for whatever reason, the kids are more anxious and depressed. And in England, it was something like 70%.
Yeah.
And they said the US is right on par with that. That's a lot. That is a lot. So, rather than be responding to it and reacting to it, I think what you're saying is, can we figure out what's causing it and try to, try to address it? So, it's really, it's a multi-pronged approach, has to be.
Great. Any other comments? Wonderful. So, I think that concludes the open public hearing part of the presentation. The next agenda item is to vote the fiscal year budget as it was presented. Do we make a motion for the complete number?
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think so. So, I'd like to hear a motion to approve the fiscal year budget as stated in our budget book for, Dawn, please correct me if I'm wrong, total of $10,616,534.
$354.
I'm sorry, 300. There you go. We know what that is. I'll restate that. I'd like to hear a motion to approve the budget as stated in our budget book for $10,616,354.
So, left.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Carries unanimously.
Thank you everyone for working on it. Thank you.
This is the budget that was presented on January 20th, on January 22nd, so you have...
It hasn't changed.
Hasn't changed.
So, thank you, Dawn, and everyone that has to work with you, Beth, Andrew, and everyone else that worked with you, that's great. So, we're going to move to the report section of our agenda with the principal report with Ms. Dial.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to thank everyone who worked so carefully on the budget to support all of our students. And I thought I would jump to the segment of my report that addresses that piece as well. We've got a number of people here at Chicaring who were recertified in safety care, which is our district program, to help support those students to recalibrate and be ready to work well in classroom. So, that's in, and every year, we tend to retrain everybody on the team and then add a couple of folks in, so we try to retain, prove about 10 to 12 people for that. We've also attended a number of conferences that are in combination with Wright, this new organization that we've partnered with to support our center. And I also wanted to add that our guidance counselor at Chicaring is dual-certified as an adjustment counselor. So, we've had that benefit all along, and I believe it's the same case at Pine Hill. It involves a lot of work with outside therapists and a lot of work with families, and I'm so... And I'm so thankful that we've had the benefit of someone with that experience and certification in that role. We're so excited to see a lot of families, a lot of parents in the building right now for parent teacher conferences. Nice to see people come in and going and touch base. We are also deep in preparations for MCAS. Deb Riley is doing a fabulous job as she always does, getting our teams ready, getting our students ready, making sure our infrastructure is what it needs to be. So we are well on our way and having our last grade begin the process of preparation for digital assessments this year. And then we'll continue with that. Our fourth and fifth graders, of course, are already prepared for that. So that's open to you. Do you have any questions?
Questions, yes, please.
I have two questions. One is pretty concrete and the other one maybe not so much, but I loved, you won't be surprised here, I loved your first paragraph and the focus on the whole child and the building lifelong skills. And maybe there's not an easy answer to this, but how does that, this is where parents are first going to learn that this is a district priority. This is how we feel in this district and we keep wanting to emphasize that it's not just grades, it's the whole child perspective. How does that get communicated teacher by teacher or when they come into the classroom and they see those ones, twos and threes, I think they are, and we want a more, to encourage a more holistic approach? I don't know if it's an easy answer, but how does that start to get communicated at the elementary level?
It's an excellent question and the nice thing is we've seen significant strides in that this year alone with our emphasis on cultural responsiveness. All of our teams have a goal of enhancing the work that they do with children and we truly have had this view of needing to connect with kids, wanting to view the whole child and not just their academic needs. We've seen great strides across all the grades in terms of the kinds of conversations that they're having. I feel like that's really the root of it, the conversations that teachers have with parents and not just around parent teacher conference time.
Yeah.
For example, in some of the upper grades, they have brought in not only a lot of new literature, but they are redesigning their literature circles. They are redesigning how they conduct their open circle sessions. They are bringing up more sensitive topics. Two years ago, when we started talking about gender differences and some of these other things, it was a new topic for educators. There were new resources that we introduced and there was some discomfort in that because it was new. That seems in some regards a long time ago.
Okay.
Because we had to set the tone that there's not an expectation that we have all the answers, but there is an expectation that we open ourselves up to have those discussions and to get to know our children and our families better. We could always do a better job in communicating that, but I feel that it is happening at that individual level in the classrooms. I have a lot of teachers talking to me about surprising comments. Some teachers bring it up in staff meetings. And I think the more we can share that out with each other, the easier it is to, for all of us to keep having those conversations.
It's definitely happening, like on a personal level too for me. I have a, I have a third grader with Michelle who is on an IP and I felt like we just had our meeting recently and they do, we talked about him as a whole child and like, you know, academically, socially, emotionally, he needs like occupational therapy, he's kind of gummy, he doesn't like to sit up, but I, like Michelle, we talk about the, him as a whole child and like, you know, how do we get him to sit up straight so he can do, because it does all matter.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I feel really supported by them and the speech pathologists and, I mean, I have, they've done an amazing job.
And then we have teachers, you know, they'll have a student who has a certain interest, the typical ones in the early grades are dinosaurs and space, extreme weather, but you might get a student and you don't happen to have a book selection that matches their reading level and their interests. And, and teachers will buy more books to make sure that that child is engaged so that while we're teaching those foundational reading skills, they're engaged in the content of the books that they're reading. And then as a school, we try to support that as well. But then, you know, there's a lot, a lot more we can be doing in that area.
No, I'm sure you're doing a ton. It's really the parents, I'm thinking, how we keep reinforcing this message to the parents that it's not just that one, two or three that we're working on. And we all want to be consistently delivering that same message. And unfortunately, it starts down here, so.
It does. It would be, you have that benefit also, that kind of the burden of making sure that we're doing that well.
Right.
I think with the adoption of Blooms this year, there's much more regular communication with parents.
Okay. Messaging, yeah. And my second question is just, I was looking at the books and I'm thinking, so every year 339 new books come in, what happens to the old books when they, do they get donated? Do they get?
Librarians have a system for weeding periodically and I don't have a specific answer for that other than that they do have a system. I don't know if you have anything to add to that. You know, we continually expand our library and-
Yeah. You might not know, I just thought it might be a good opportunity for giving and, you know, demonstrating that and maybe the kids take the books, I don't, I don't know, it just seemed like-
Depends on the reason for weeding out.
Okay.
If there's still good quality books.
Maybe not appropriate so much anymore.
There's also a date on nonfiction books, so after they're a certain number of years old, they're considered inaccurate.
Oh, really?
If they're damaged and can't be repaired. So if they can be reused, they are passed on to other schools.
They are, okay.
But if they can't be-
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, you get 440 new, or 340 new books coming. You look around and-
It's a good opportunity to-
I think it's always neat when you open up the cover and you see a name of a student that is maybe with an older child or, you know, a name that you recognize. It's kind of neat.
They probably don't have those things you sign out anymore though, right?
From the back of the-
You can see you took out the book before.
They don't use the cards anymore.
They probably don't, right?
The Dewey desk system.
The children check out their own books.
They scan them, right?
But remember, books from the heart that have the name played on them.
They do, that's true.
If they're stolen from-
Who they-
They're stolen from my kids, yeah.
Well, thank you.
Further questions for Ms. Dial? I would like to point out and thank you for noting this in your comments about Ms. McLaughlin being out. Hopefully she's in speedy recovery and we'll see her in the fall. And then also for Ms. Corliss beyond maternity leave, so that's great too. So the family is growing.
Thank you.
But thank you for, I always enjoy seeing the personnel communications.
There were some nice pictures going around Chickering today, Michelle's baby.
Well, they didn't make it into the update.
They made it all with my fifth grader, yeah.
Word travels among the kids faster than the parents.
She came blasting in the house, "Miss Corliss had her pee, dude." Cool.
Always a hot topic for the children when one of their teachers or aides has a baby. So that's great, thank you. Ms. McCoy?
Thank you. So I'll touch on a few things that are in the report and then add a few more that didn't make it in by the deadline. So DSCF, I would just like to thank them for their continued generosity. We had a chance in central office to read through all of the grant applications and through Dawn's creative thinking, we were able to weed out some that were either small acts or some that could be folded into the general budget. So those that went forth to the DSCF to review are all excellent, excellent proposals and I feel like they're going to have a very difficult job deciding how to fund all the requests because it's going to be hard saying no to any one of them. One that I'd like to highlight is actually a K through 12 ask. All four schools came together and collaborated to develop a grant for innovative classroom spaces. And so Alison Gullings-Rood from Pine Hill is spearheading this with a book all about how to make your classroom student centered. And so basically the idea is you take absolutely everything out of your classroom, all the clutter that's been there, the posters that have been there for X many years, and you start from scratch thinking about what the classroom is like for the kid and building it around that and really building in some innovative furniture so that kids can be up, kids can be down, kids can be, you know, sitting, crisscross applesauce, whatever they need to do as they move to the centers. So the good news is there was a huge amount of interest from the faculty. We asked for people who are be interested in getting involved in the program, reading the book, working together. So we'll definitely have people who are able to move forward hopefully with the grants. And the question is how will we be able to fund everyone else that's inspired over time? So if anybody comes across a money tree, let us know because it's exciting to see that there's an interest in becoming more innovative in school. The FLESS program, Henry brought up Spanish, and I would just like to add that we had a K through 12 FLESS meeting on one of the early release days recently and the elementary class teachers had an opportunity to present the work they've been doing with their K through fifth graders. They brought videos, they brought audio, they brought work samples and they shared them with the middle and high school folks. And then the middle school teachers also shared some of the more proficiency-based activities which match the FLESS program here as well to show, you know, that they're preparing and getting ready and moving along with this, with this movement. And what was interesting is that I had the teachers working in groups, mixed groups from different schools, and in every group you heard the high school Spanish and world language teachers say, "Oh my God, a fifth grader did that?" So I think it's really exciting to see the growth of these kids over time and that it's really going to push our middle and high school teachers to really up their game and think about how and why they do what they do. The fifth graders also took the Apple test, which is a standard measure, standardized tests are not everything, but sometimes they're helpful in having a common ruler to measure proficiency. You know, all the goals of the FLESS program originally, which was, you know, looking at culture and differences and different sounds. One small goal was to hopefully have the students speaking and listening at the novice high or intermediate low level. We weren't so much worried about reading and writing because they're still developing their skills in English to read and write. The good news is that on average, both elementary schools got novice high, intermediate low on all four skills. So the program is really working, which is excellent. Fifth and sixth grade teachers have also been meeting, there's always been transition meetings as you're unsure where, as the students have moved up. But most of them have been about individual students and placements and supports for individual kids. This year we've had fifth grade teachers visiting sixth grade classrooms and vice versa, so they're starting to share instructional practices and strategies so that even though they might be in a different building, the classroom doesn't look entirely different from fifth grade to sixth grade, which is great. Lots of positive feedback there. Kudos to the challenge success committee for another successful event in bringing Catherine Steiner Adair to talk about the influence of technology on relationships and families. That was great.
Potentially a real connection with SEL and supportive of our efforts to try and address some of the SEL issues.
Exactly. Yeah, and that was the same point that I was going to make, thank you, about being, not only adding staff to support the social, excuse me, social emotional needs of our kids, but also educating parents, which then ties into the next piece, which is the innovative innovation committee, which is looking at it from the academic side of things and as some of us would speculate that it screams in social media that's causing anxiety and stress for our kids, some of us would also argue that it's our instructional practices that, you know, our students are learning, losing curiosity and love of learning over time. So as the innovation committee starts to fight that battle, hopefully we'll see a decrease, you know, in needs over time. That being said, the innovation committee has two events coming up and I know there's so much going on in DS, so I feel like just putting one-liners in my report, they don't get a lot of attention, but I would like to say that everyone's invited to the March 21st and April 10th events. March 21st, we have parents and community members from both Dover and Sherburne who will be coming out from all different backgrounds and careers, talking about their jobs, what a day in life looks like, what skills they use now, why they landed there and what they foresee the future of their careers looking like and what that means for our kids and how we should be teaching them now. So that's great. We'll have actually our high school innovation committee members moderating that event. And then-
Are the high school students invited to that as well?
Yes.
Okay.
And April 10th, we have a similar panel talking about how to prepare our kids for college before they get to the careers. And the focus there is really, you hear so much in the research about how college professors are saying, you know, you're accepting the kids with the five-point OGPAs who have perfect scores on the standardized test, but they get to us and they can't think for themselves and we have to, you know, teach them to be creative and innovative and all of those things. So we're inviting in college professors to talk about what they're seeing in the classroom, what they would like to see in their classrooms, having college admissions reps saying, "This is what we're currently asking for in applications, this is how it's changing in some of our schools and this is how we think it needs to change in order to make the professors happy," which I think is going to speak to the need to look at, you know, a wider portfolio of student performance, including capstones, interdisciplinary work, community service, examples of empathy and caring about others, et cetera. So I'm excited about them, I'm a little biased, but I'd love to see you there.
We'll be there.
That's it.
Thank you.
Open to questions?
Yes, questions for Ms. McCoy?
Just great to hear about the, those meetings between the Spanish teachers in, at all the school offices, just sounds just tremendous. And I know that the little gold dust sprinkled over the Spanish subject has even reached middle school lunch today when the Spanish students had cupcakes all on one table. Obviously it's a treat, something had happened and my son who doesn't do Spanish was very envious of the Spanish students and their cupcakes. It's obviously an attractive thing to do. And again, on the DSCF classroom space restructuring possibility, how many, what proportion of teachers put their hands up, roughly?
At Chickering, do you remember?
There was an online survey to gauge interest and I think there were around four or five at every school.
What, I think there might have been more than that. I can't speak specifically for Chickering. I know we had budgeted more at the elementary schools, budgeted more spots at the elementary schools than we did at the secondary level and realized that there was far greater interest at the secondary level than we ever expected. And I think we have four or five spots available, the elementary level, and more interest than that.
It's written out in the form, so I don't remember what the timeline was.
Okay.
But it was nice to see it across all schools.
Great. More?
Thank you.
We always seem to talk about FLESS and it's getting closer and closer for those of us that have been, I think all of us have been here for quite a few years and seen it from either personally or on the committee right from the get-go. And it's interesting how, and maybe we've done this, but as you were talking, I was thinking about analogy where, you know, they were wondering how the fifth graders were there, were going into sixth grade and where they fit and how it's going to hopefully raise the bar for the middle school. Sometimes with sports programs, you know, they end up teaching plays at a younger grade that are consistent all the way through till they get into high school or whatever the case may be. There might be an opportunity as if we understand, once we understand how these students are going into the middle school in the transition and where they potentially could be when they get to high school, we start to filter down some techniques that they could start to learn and reinforce some of the base learning as they get there. And maybe that's happening because obviously this is something that they leave to the experts, but it made me think about there might be a way to sort of message down some things that could be base learning as they start to move back up.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting point. You know, the whole idea is spiraling, the students have learned about, you know, the places in the home, the places in school, going out to restaurants and those vocabulary. So the question is, well, do you not cover that again in middle school? You do, but in greater depth and with a greater purpose, which is more around culture and differences. But I would, I would say that the elementary teachers were the first to develop the proficiency-based program. So I think they actually have the skills and the tools that the secondary folks are going to have to learn. So I think the plays are actually going to work their way out.
Yeah, that's good.
Very curious who's going to stay with Spanish and that's going to be an interesting transition. When do they select that?
So April, they'll be selecting. It's interesting because I spoke with Brookline, they have a FLESS program for both Mandarin and Spanish and their district has found that students tend to stick with the language that they started with. However-
I assume so.
-informal surveys by both the FLESS teachers and fifth grade parents have indicated that it's going to be a mix because this is a student's first chance at choice in education. They're like, whoa, I get to pick a language. So we think there's going to be a mix.
Well, if there's more cupcakes circulating, that might push the pendulum a bit. Sounds like a survivor going on.
Yeah, we do have a retirement actually at the middle school, I'm sorry to keep talking, in the world language department, which will allow us some flexibility moving forward.
That'll be interesting, okay.
Thank you, Beth. As always, very good. Dr. Keo?
Yes, so as I mentioned before, we should actually have full confirmation from accept at our next meeting, which is March 14th, the board of directors will meet and we expect them to vote to use reserves to offset some of the huge hit that was kind of set about by the withdrawal of Framingham, so, but those numbers are already factored in.
I left a little, a little bit of a reserve there just for one billion- I left a little, a little bit of a reserve there just for, one, building the base for the next year. And also, we have a tendency here not to really be able to project what our additional rides are going to be and what our summer costs are going to be. So if you notice, we've always been over recently in them, so I've left some money in there so that we hopefully come back next year and will be under budget in transportation. Is our goal.
And so Except is obviously something that's important to us. We also send teachers for professional development. I don't know if we have any Dover students taking advantage of their programs now. We do. And so it's, it's an important program to us. And I mentioned a little later on that the director is, the executive director is actually retiring this year. And so there's been a search underway, and I must have left the room for a minute because I was picked to be on the search committee.
Never leave the room!
Never leave the room. And so, although I will say it's been a great process, and they expect to, to make their selection very soon, if not that same day of the fourteenth. Speaking of the fourteenth, you've heard today, I hope, from Cheryl, that our search for our Director of Student Services is now really winding down, and we're down to two candidates, Kate McCarthy and Lisa Waldman Sisson. And they are two really fabulous educators, so I'm excited about it. They're coming out on the fourteenth. The schedule, I hope you were able to open it, will kind of speak for itself. And my hope is that I can make a decision after some background checks and additional phone calls, make a decision and be able to bring a candidate forward to you that following week. So I will probably work with the chairs to see if we can arrange a joint school committee meeting.
If you haven't responded to Cheryl, which I know some of you have, just do so.
That's right. She sent out a poll.
She did put the twenty-first at six-thirty as a date, so that's.
Adrian pointed that out. There's a conflict with.
Oh, yeah, it's a conflict with best event. Okay, so.
Make sure we take that one off.
That's a good, good point, so.
We can just do back-to-back, and then I'll come to be there.
Well, that's fine, too. I mean, if it's going to be a quick one, I could do that.
Well, I mean, famous last words. Probably would have been, until you said.
Try to avoid the day.
Now, it's going to be an hour and a half.
If you anticipate short, you're not going to get it.
Exactly. No. We'll probably try and work out around the twenty-first. But the key is that we have a forum from each of the committees. That's the key. And the, so anyway, so that's that. Start times, I wanted to mention, Michael has, has really been active in the start times task force, but so has Don and I have as well. And it was really unfortunate that we had the snow date on Monday because it kind of threw our, our process off a little bit. We had planned to have the kind of community event. We had a lot of people signed up. We had planned to have Dr. Chuck Seisler speak, and then to poll parents in the immediate aftermath. He's not available. In fact, we moved this meeting.
For that meeting.
For that meeting.
We couldn't have had this meeting anyway, right?
So it's, there's that ripple effect. We do have a date that we're batting around. It is later in the month, and we're working on our surveys of the community and our staff and students to coincide with presentations that we've given to them. So we've already spoken to the faculty. I'm speaking to the students next week, and we will poll all these people or survey these people and kind of work off of that data, along with that which we, as a task force, think is in the best interest, and are preparing to bring forward some possible scenarios for the joint school committees to consider at their April ninth meeting.
Okay.
And the expectation is that we would share with you in advance in your packets kind of what we were thinking about and get your feedback. And if there's more work that you'd like us to do or more information that you'd like us to flesh out, that's fine, because this is a process, and that would happen, probably we could come back again on April thirtieth. And so that's kind of where we're at. It's, this is a, this is an arduous process because it's, it impacts all of us, right? If we change the start times, it impacts every single parent, teacher, student, administrator, all of us. So we want to do what's right. We also are being guided by what we think is going to be in the best interest of the kids, and that is absolutely has to be our number-one priority. All of these other interests are priorities, too. But we do want to do what we think is going to be in the best interest of the kids, and we're trying to keep that as our focus. So that's, that's where we are on that. You can always catch the Keough's Corner television show on that. It's a huge hit. It's very popular these days.
The rating's probably greater than Dover School Committee.
Well, it's a neck and neck. But actually, I had a good conversation with Joe Murray and Evan Strauss from High School, High School Juniors. It was a great conversation. They hit us with some good questions, so. The other thing that I wanted to mention, well, actually, just the, the meetings that I went to, the one thing that I thought was really, really cool and I wanted to point out was that at the Mass Association of School Superintendents, there was a presentation by Andrew Cawkins on the five reasons why Massachusetts schools can genuinely lead the nation and what would that look like if it were true. What it would look like is exactly what the Innovation Committee and all of our other kind of priorities as a system are working on. That's what it would look like. And that's why that link that I put in there is so worth checking out if you get a chance. It's really, really very cool. And other than that, we attached for your review, the approved warrants and that representatives from the school committee signed the dates and has been agreed upon in the past.
Yep.
You don't vote on that or anything. For your review. Yep. And unless you have any other questions, that's my report.
I have a quick question.
Absolutely.
On the fourteenth, what is the format you're expecting? I saw the time. There are two times, back-to-back. Are we, is it informal Q and A? Are they going to present something?
Totally, totally informal. Usually what they'll do is they'll give you a brief overview of yourself, and usually a school committee member will step up, somebody will step up and say, you know, "Perhaps you could just tell us a little bit about yourself," and then we're going to hit you with a couple of questions, things that we're interested in hearing more about. And obviously, my hope is that you'll come away pleased with the candidates' answers. And I, I think that you, you're a well-educated group of people at this point. You've heard a lot about special education over the course of your time here and also, especially this year. We've talked a lot about special education and kind of our, and the social-emotional challenges, which relates to guidance, well-being, the whole child. I hope that you'll ask questions like that. And then there's an opportunity for you to complete kind of an assessment of the candidate, which I'll read all of.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Andrew, I have two questions. The intent to come to the joint school committee meetings with a couple of start time or a menu of possible options, is the thinking that that would be for nineteen-twenty implementation?
No, the thinking is that would be for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
The thinking is that if we, if we were, yeah, it would just be a little too, too much of an ask.
And what's the size of the reserve funds at Except? Are they?
It's massive, no. It's, it's.
It's their free cash.
It's their free cash, kind of like an E and D for the region or free cash for the towns. It's not excessive at all.
But that's only one year, right?
This is only going to cover, this is only going to cover us for one year. So this is what Don was referencing that.
Offsetting to some degree.
They're helping to hit the, you know, sort of soften the blow a little bit.
It'll be back next year.
Still going to blow.
It'll be back next year.
It's, it's almost a five-million-dollar transportation budget, and they're using their, like, four-hundred-and-fifty thousand to offset it. So just to give you that relationship, it's not a huge chunk, but it definitely brings it down a little bit for all the districts that participate.
But some of the districts are looking at a two-hundred-thousand-dollar increase.
Yeah, depending on how, how much. And also, again, like, who, if you have different, if you have a different number of riders than you had before, all of a sudden, all these factors. So it, over the base, was about a fifteen percent increase. If you had no change in your riders and no change in how far they were driving, it was about a fifteen percent increase in your transportation budget, which is larger than they've seen in the past.
No, it's just, it's not unheard of for organizations to have larger reserve funds than they possibly should have.
Oh, yeah. No, they've been trying to build theirs back up, so, yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's.
They're not at their, they're not at the place they want to be.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay.
Thank you. We're going to move to the monthly financial report.
Right, which is not a lot of changes from the last report that you received. So I try to recap it just for, to remind you where the numbers are coming from. The new item that I added in, as you met, as you saw in Laura's report, you know, we have another teacher out. We've had a lot of teachers out on medical leave, so we are running a negative variance right now in the substitute line item, which you'll see. Other than that, everything else sort of remains the same. We're still looking at a fairly large positive salary variance due to the not filling the Strategic Learning Center position and post fiscal year nineteen retirements that had a positive impact. I don't have any significant expenditure variances to report at this time. There was a slight increase in the out-of-district. There were, there weren't any new changes, but there were some changes in placements, some transportation and some different, some additional valuations that brought your negative variance up to seventy-three thousand.
Great. Any comments for Don, questions?
Thank you.
You always keep a sharp eye on that, so thank you very much. The next item, it's an annual item, so all of us have seen it before, but I'd like you, Andrew, if you don't mind, just giving us a quick review on what the school choice law is before we take action. Again, it's repeat for most, but it's good to remind.
Absolutely. So it's Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-Six, Section Twelve, requires local school committees to vote annually as to whether or not the district will participate in school choice. I'm sure you've discussed this before, but what's important to, to know, and I think part of the reason why the Dover and Sherburne and Dover Sherburne schools have not taken this up is because the actual reimbursement for a student is roughly five thousand dollars, and your per pupil expenditures are over twenty, or certainly in that range for the elementary age. So it doesn't make sense. Not only that, it can become a space issue. Whether or not you have space for students from another town is definitely a consideration. And also that, once you accept a student from another town, you need to keep that student all the way through. So traditionally, the schools in the Dover Sherburne District have opted not to participate.
Thank you. Any questions before I hear a motion? I've moved to have the Dover schools not participate in the school choice program for two thousand nineteen-twenty school year. Do I have a motion?
Yes.
Second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. In your packet, we have the consent agenda for the minutes from January twenty-second. Is there any comments or anything that we caught? Thank you. There's also your communications packet from the regional school committee in the, from January fifteenth, and the Sherburne School Committee's from November thirteenth. Just a point for dates to remind everybody. We potentially have a joint school committee specialist meeting the week of the eighteenth. I think the poll was in nineteen-twenty-twenty-one for special ed. We also have a joint meeting scheduled for April ninth. That's on your schedule. And then our next Dover School Committee meeting is scheduled for May twentieth. Wonderful.
Anyway, what was the first date that you mentioned?
There's especially the potential for a special meeting that Cheryl polled us on to approve the special ed, the director's student services. So that is not on your calendar officially, but it's sometime that week.
And then April ninth, join.
April ninth, join. If you don't have it, please add it.